Testing, one, two, three. This will be the October 1st, 2013 City Council Workshop Meeting.
Done what? I got it. You don't have to sit here.
Good evening, I'd like to call the order. A City Council Workshop for the city of Satellite Beach, October 1st, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. At this time, we're going to discuss direction of code enforcements.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we had requested to schedule a workshop to discuss some aspects of code enforcement. The reason why staff requested this is because we're kind of getting some pull in different directions from different, not only council people but from the community members on how we should be doing code enforcement. So what we wanted to do was go through what we do now, and then some of the code problems that we've recognized throughout our period, and then get some direction from you of whether you think what we're doing now is great, whether you would like us to change, what can we improve, those types of things. So that's what we're here for. John Stone has provided or prepared a great presentation for you this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to him and allow him to go through that.
Is that your back there? Tonight, we're here to talk about code enforcement, and with that said, it's something that everybody wants and nobody wants. But it is a necessary part of maintaining community standards, and somehow you've got to find that balance between maintaining community standards and property rights. And so it's not black and white, there is a balance, and hopefully that's what we'll get out of this tonight, is maybe a little discussion on whether or not where we want to be, the sweet spot as far as how much enforcement is enough or too much. So with that said, two things. One, I'd like to thank you all for letting us talk tonight about our processes, and two, I want to thank Rob, because until I went through and started talking to all these other cities and crunching these numbers and looking at it every which way, I didn't really realize how good of a job we were doing. And I say that only because we were not always doing such a great job. Things dramatically changed back in 2011, and what happened in 2011 is we lost our code enforcement officer, and we had to basically remake ourselves. So we looked at everything, and we basically started from scratch. You know, we started a database, we started tracking things, we started responding differently to issues out in the field, and it's worked out tremendously. What we've found is we're getting a much more positive reaction from the people we've got to deal with, because unfortunately, you know, when you're dealing with code enforcement issues, there's always two people there. There's somebody complaining, and then there's a respondent, and rarely do you find where both of them are going to be happy. So the best you can do is, at the end of the day, is try to be fair, reasonable, consistent, and hopefully you get a compromise between the two of them, and you bring it into compliance, and you work with the residents, and you try to come up with an action plan that is agreeable to them and meets the intent of the code. So with that said, thank you, Rob, for the job that you do out there. All right, go to the next slide, please. So the objectives here tonight, since I can't really read that up there, I'll read from here. But basically, let's first talk about what the plan is here tonight, and that's to talk in general terms, it's not really to discuss specific code cases. If there are any specific code cases that either somebody in the public or council member has, then please bring them to either myself or Courtney, and we will get back to you with whatever resolution we find with that. So this is a discussion on the general processes of code enforcement, as well as we're going to talk to you about how we do those processes, and the amount of time involved in it, and try to get a feel for whether or not the level that we're at is the level that you expect us to be at. Plus or minus, don't really matter, you know, we're here to follow whatever tempo you guys set as the policymakers. Just some of the things that we're going to talk about here in the coming slides is some statistical backgrounds of compliances and the time that's allocated to the compliance activities. Unlike a lot of municipalities, we don't have a code enforcement department per se, we have no dedicated staff. So what we do is we try to roll it in our everyday mission of going out and doing building inspections, and while we're out there, we're obviously looking for things, particularly if we're on our way to respond to a complaint. You know, we're looking to the left and to the right, and we're going to make sure that when we go up and we talk to somebody about their boat, we didn't pass four boats on the way getting there. And so with that said, we're probably about 75% reactive right now and 25% proactive. And back when, in 2011 and before that, we were more proactive simply because we had dedicated staff that part of their routine was is they literally drove the city two, three days a week, and then they were in the office doing their administration the other days. So they were certainly out there a lot more. We don't have the staffing to do that, so our primary mission is to respond to complaints. And then if we happen to see things on the way, then we deal with those as well. So in addition to the time allocated, you know, we're also, I've got a little chart in here, it's a comparative of the other cities, and I basically reached out to each one of the cities and looked at what they were doing, and tried to quantify things into some couple, like five questions, because I didn't really want to put a lot on these cities and ask them a whole bunch of questions, so I just kind of boiled it down to a few things to give a good snapshot on what they're doing and how they're doing it. We'll talk real briefly about fertilizer ordinance, only from an enforcement perspective, because you will be seeing this as a first reading here, what, in the end of the month?
Sixteenth, on the sixteenth.
Yeah, yeah. So that will come back to you as council for first reading for further discussion. And then at the end, we're just going to end it with a discussion, open discussion on where you guys think we're at, and if there's things that you'd like to see us do differently or better, please let us know. Rob? He should be on code compliance process. There you go, thanks. So the process. First thing we do is we receive a call or observe the violation, and then after that, our first attempt is, the best we can is to make personal contact with them. That's not always possible, people are not home, they're vacant properties, you know, just a lot of reasons why you can't always do it, but we really try to make that first impression a positive one by having some direct communication, to try to understand what the real problems are. Sometimes just because they're not mowing the grass, it's not because they don't want to mow the grass, sometimes there's other reasons. So we like to try to get a little bit of a better understanding of what it's going to take to bring the property into compliance, you know, whether it's relocating the boat because they're trying to find a place to store it, whatever it is. So when that's not possible, we have a courtesy notice, which essentially is very brief, and we intentionally keep it brief because we want them to call us for more information, so we can again have that personal conversation to find out what it is it's going to take to bring that property back into compliance. So after the first contact, whether it be with a door hanger or what we call a nice letter, which is a non-code enforcement action, it's similar to a door hanger. A door hanger would be used in the case where it's an occupied dwelling. If it's a vacant property, it makes no sense to leave a door hanger. So we're going to be sending that letter off to wherever the property owner is. And then within that, we put some dates, certain times in there that we expect a call back so we can go over the issues. If we really, if we don't have any responses to that, then we send out the formal notice of violation. And in that notice, it defines what the violation is, what is necessary to bring it into compliance, and a date certain on when we expect that thing to be brought into compliance. Generally, that's usually where we get the calls, to talk to us about what's necessary to bring into compliance. If they're still unresponsive of that, the next thing that happens is they get sent a notice of hearing, and that's when we affirmatively establish that hearing date. If it goes all the way to a hearing, which we have not had a code enforcement hearing in a year and a half, again, a lot of that has to do with Rob over there, I call him a closer, because he does a phenomenal job of putting these things to bed before they ever get that far. And so, again, hats off to him for doing that. If it was to go to code enforcement, what would happen is, they were determined to be in violation, they're going to give him, or them, whoever, a compliance date, you know, anywhere from a day to 30 days, six days, whatever they work out with the board. If they fail to bring it into compliance within that period of time, then what happens is, is it goes back to the board. Well, first, let me back up a little bit. So that order, if that first hearing is, that order is filed with the clerk's office, basically saying that there's a violation and this is what the order was. If they fail to meet those requirements of that order, then it goes back to the code enforcement board to establish the fine, and then it goes forward as a lien on the property. And then it can attach to all real property that is owned by that individual. And that's basically the code compliance process. Rob, next one. This up here is that chart I was telling you about. Some interesting things that I found was like the proactive and the reactive, looking at the different cities and how they move forward with it. Some cities, they claim to be 100% proactive, you know, they're out there every day, they're looking for violations, and they're very proactive with them. You have other cities that say we are 100% reactive, you know, we're trying to open up our doors, and our philosophy is unless somebody complains, we're not addressing it. So I don't think we need to be in either one of those ends, we're somewhere in the middle. I listed us as about 75% reactive, 25% proactive, and again, that's because of our process of how we're out there dealing with violations. Generally, we're responding to complaints, and then we are observing things as we're out doing our normal course of business during the day, particularly with the grass and the boats, and those take up the majority of our time. I think boats, well, we'll get to that in a minute as far as percentage is what they are. One of the things that I wanted to look at was, should we take anonymous calls? There's some advantages to it, and some disadvantages too. Obviously, the disadvantage is, is if you take an anonymous call, there's nobody to respond back to, and so then you get the call after the fact of some period of time that they're all upset because you didn't deal with something. Well, we did. We either determined it wasn't a violation, or we worked out some kind of plan with them, and there was nobody to follow up with. As far as not taking anonymous calls, the county is probably the best example of that. They have like five districts, and two of the districts do not take anonymous calls. Mary Lynn's happens to be one of them that don't take anonymous calls. And when talking to the county, they said, "Well, that's great, you have these five districts that are all going into one office, so you've got a pretty good idea of what's working and not working of those two situations." And they said, "Well, the two advantages of not taking anonymous calls. Number one is, because of the reduced staffing at the county, they found that there was clearly an advantage because the call volume dropped down. You know, people weren't always willing to leave their information, because it is part of public record, and you know, there's concerns of retaliation, and they just don't like to leave their information." The other advantage is what I call bullying, you know, where one neighbor is just wanting to give their neighbor a hard time for whatever reason, and they definitely found that by not taking anonymous calls, it reduced the bullying. So that's something that you may want to consider, is where you have to give your contact information in order to make a complaint, but that's a policy decision in the council. Does anybody have any questions on this chart while we're at that point? Okay.
Can you, for instance, in your bottom line 2012 CEV hearings under Cape Canaveral, you've got the pound sign, what does that mean?
It means that they didn't have that information available. A lot of times, like in our case, the CEVs are numbered, but just because you have a CEV number doesn't necessarily mean it went to a code enforcement board. And they didn't have a real clear tracking of what was actually heard without going through a lot of hoops. So again, I didn't press, I got as much of this information as I could from all the cities, but at some point, it was becoming a little difficult, so when you see that pound sign, it was just, I couldn't get it from them without really pushing the envelope.
And on your dedicated CE staff in forensics, week hours, what does that mean?
Okay. Where you do have code enforcement, dedicated code enforcement staff, like what we used to have, if you have dedicated administration to handle that, because I'll tell you, a big part of code enforcement is the darn paperwork. You know, it's, you know, filling out all these forms and sending registered letters, and we've tried to reduce that as much as possible, that's why I'm so thankful that Rob's able to get as much closed out before it ever gets to that point. So what that really is saying is, is do you have a staff dedicated to the code enforcement process? Most don't. For instance, we don't, you know, we have no dedicated code enforcement staff, Rob and I just kind of share those duties, and we have no dedicated administration for that.
I understand that, I just don't know what WK slash slash.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, work slash hours. Oh, so what I did is, those that did have dedicated staff, I asked them to tell me if they're full-time, part-time, and I essentially just totaled them all up, and that gave me work hours, so within a week. So, you know, if you had one full-time person that handles all your code enforcement, that's 40 hours. You got a full-time and a part-time, 60 hours.
So it's actually hours per week is what you're saying? So it should be reversed, okay.
Yeah. Okay, Rob, next slide, please. This right here, this is just some statistics that I went back and looked at our tracking over the past year and before that even. One thing that changed was that the, when we eliminated our code enforcement staff back in 2011, you know, that reduced our staffing by 27%, you know, that was huge. And he didn't do just code enforcement, he was also assisting in office administration, so he was kind of an all-around person. In fact, I started using him more in just to keep him out of the field more, and reduce problems out there. So anyway, staff was reduced by 27%, and the problem with that is, is while staff went down, code enforcement continued to go up. And you'll see a graph on that in a little bit here. It's increased by 94% since 2010, and you know, primarily it's because of your foreclosures and vacant properties, and they can be the biggest challenge to deal with, because you don't have a face-to-face with somebody, you know, you've got a property owner that has physically and emotionally removed themselves from that property. And you have a bank that is, you know, saying, "Wait a minute, we haven't taken a rip possession on this property, we don't own that property, therefore, we're not going to do anything." And so it ends up in this limbo state, so we don't have a lot of options. One of them is, is we can tell Public Works to go out and go in, knowing that we will never see reimbursement for that. And the cost of filing a lien on mowing, the cost of a lien to file is more than the mowing in most cases. So it's not really a productive way to do it, but in some cases, the worst cases, we have to do things like that. But I try to minimize that because Allen doesn't have a huge amount of staff to handle that, and so we do everything we can, and so I'm on the phone to any and everybody that'll talk to me, in the banks and, you know, property management companies, and whoever I can get to push a little bit to deal with those property issues, and we've had some pretty good success with that. Some of them are just bigger challenges than others, and they don't happen as quickly as we would like, but at the end of the day, we end up, you know, getting compliance on these things, it just sometimes takes longer than we would like for them to happen. So the thing is, is try to get them to do it before we have to step in and do it. Sometimes it just gets so bad, we can't wait that long. Let's see here. Generally, what I did is I looked at staff hours and what we dedicate to code enforcement, and we put in roughly 20 hours a week, that's dedicated to code enforcement, between me taking, fielding the calls, Rob out there doing his thing, sending the letters, and you know, you've got to remember, code enforcement isn't go out, tell somebody to cut the grass, and you're done with code enforcement on that particular issue. And that's just the beginning of it. You know, you've got to do a follow-up to it, in some cases, it takes multiple calls and follow-ups to actually get compliance on it. You know, so it's pretty typical to have to touch that on three or four different occasions, particularly if it gets to the level of having to write letters, because then you're following up with the letters, and then you're sending other letters, and you know, the whole letter thing, really, I type the two fingers and it doesn't happen quickly. The things that really take up the lion's share of our time with code enforcement are the boats, you know, RVs, boats, jet skis, trailers, you know, all those things defined by the term RV. 30% of our code enforcement time deals with the RVs. 28% deal with property maintenance, generally, you know, your grass and that kind of stuff. So you know, you've got 50% of our time is basically dealing with boats and grass. And unfortunately, they're necessary, they're part of what we do. The rest of the small stuff happens fairly quickly. Rob, next slide, please. Just to throw some numbers out at you, what we did last year, we did 326 complaints we processed in this year as of September 13th. Based on those averages, I extrapolated that out to what it would, where we're going to be at the end of the year, and we're looking at about 559 complaints. And that's actually quite a few, and again, you'll see on this chart, it's still going up, you know, we think foreclosures are going down, but you know, first off, we just got out of the summer, so you've got rain, you've got boats, these are the common things that we're dealing with, and you know, they definitely ramp up over the summer months, on top of the vacant properties. The average time to resolve a complaint is seven days, and actually, that's pretty darn good. When I started talking to other cities, they were very surprised to see seven days, you know, because you've got to think about it, when you tell somebody they've got an issue with their grass, they need to mow the grass, you know, they're not going to run in the garage, grab a mower, and start mowing the grass, you know, you're going to be working out some kind of a compliance deadline with him, you're going to be following up on that property, and you're going to try not to make a special trip out there. So you're going to kind of roll it into other inspections you're doing, so it may take a couple of days to do your follow-up on it. So, and then you throw a weekend in there, because generally, when you're mowing the grass, you know, we give them a weekend, depending on where they're at with things. So there's two lost days that you're not going to be able to verify that it was done. So at the end of the day, getting compliance on 95% of the complaints within seven days is pretty darn good. If you subtract out those problematic ones that really throw the averages off, some of those that last a long time, that certainly causes that number to get even greater. But I would say the majority of our complaints are resolved within three and a half days, pretty quick. The average time that we put into one code enforcement issue is about an hour and a half. You know, you've got a 10-minute conversation here, you've got to follow up on another day, maybe a phone call or two, and you know, again, you've got to look at the worst-case ones that really throw those averages off. So an hour and a half is probably a little on the low side, but it's fairly typical to put something to bed. Based on that, in the 559 complaints that we'll see in a year, you know, we're looking at 16 hours per week, but that's probably not a realistic number, because what that doesn't really address, that's only logged activity. You know, Rob does a lot out in the field that never even, you know, land on the books. So there's time spent there, and plus phone calls and things that aren't necessarily tracked, they're tracked but not from this perspective here. So realistically, that's the 20 hours we talked about, and I suspect that's probably even a little bit higher if I was actually sit down with Rob and say, "Okay, tell me today, how many times you dealt with something code enforcement," the number would probably be bigger than that. But I think reasonably speaking, 20 hours is good for trying to estimate your time. Rob, next one, please. This is the chart I was talking to you about, if you look at the red, that's, you can see it where it's been ramping up, and this year is going to be worse than last year and the year before that. And if you look at the green horizontal line, that's the staffing hours. You noticed the drop in 2011, that's when we lost our code officer. So while our staff hours dropped, our activity increased, and that's when we had to redefine ourselves and say, "Well, how are we going to get this thing done? You know, either we've got to not do as much, or we've got to be much better at what we're doing." We chose to be better at what we do. Rob, next one, please. This really is just to give you some guidelines. We don't have any written policies, and not surprisingly, I spoke to every municipality, nobody has any written guidelines. They are written policies. You know, they have general guidelines, what they expect out of the code officers, how to interact with the public, and what we found is, talking to the code officers, is that it's one of those types of jobs where you've got to think on your feet, every situation is a little bit differently, and you know, this guy's hard-luck story may be different than this one here. So you know, what you need to do is just have a general guide on how you want to be treated and how to treat other people at the end of the day. And so that's really what we are working towards. Routine patrols, they're limited to going to the front door. You know, I don't want a code officer walking on the side of the building, you know, looking around and see what they can see. You know, you either see it from the right-of-way, or if you're going to the house, you go to the front door. And if you can see something from the front door, or on your way, you know, on the normal course of travel, then fine, you can report on it, but you don't go looking in back yards or side yards for issues like that. If a neighbor complains, the neighbor can invite you on their property, and if you can see it without any special means, you know, you can't lay a ladder up on the fence and look over it or anything like that, but that is the alternative if you responded to a neighbor's complaint. So that's policy number one, is go to the front door, and don't be sneaking around the property. Whenever possible, always try to make that first contact with the person personally. Let's see, what else we got here? The way we typically go out right now, because we're primarily reactive, or 75% reactive, is that we, we're not out there patrolling all the streets, you know, we're going out there either doing an inspection, a building inspection, or responding to a code enforcement complaint. So you know, I expect the code officer to be looking at other issues on the way to that property. You know, and what I don't want to have happen is for that guy to look at and say, "Well, what about that boat, that boat and that boat over there?" So you need to look at all of those. Code enforcement officers are to discourage neighbors from bullying other neighbors. You know, I can't stress that one enough, it's a sad state when that happens, but it happens all too often. And I don't mean one complaint against your neighbor, you know, I mean repeated complaints that turn out to be, for the most part, trivial, and do not improve the quality of life of that person who's making those complaints. It just, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth when I have to deal with that. So the code officer, what they're supposed to do is try to discourage that, and try to get to the root of the problem, why are you making this complaint? Is this really something that's going to make a difference in your life? And try to resolve it that way. And when you're talking to the respondent, the person that has the alleged violation, is try to understand what is causing the violation, you know, did your mower break? Is there an illness in the family? And we do that quite a bit, to the point where I've seen Rob get a neighbor helping neighbor in like the United Methodist Church that you'll hear about, with the nomads, helping people. So we have a little pool of people that we turn those kind of people on to. I've seen Rob where he's saw people that were just flat out in trouble, and got the police involved to enter the property, and turned out to be a very good thing to do that. And so on more than one occasion, he probably was instrumental in saving somebody's life, certainly improving their quality of life. Next slide, Rob. Where do we go from here? You know, this is really just to say, this is what we do, guys. How are we doing? You know, is there things that you'd like to see us do better? Or are you okay with what we're doing? We're open to suggestions. And I also have the fertilizer ordinance in here, if you want to talk a couple minutes about that as well. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very, very much. Start off with council asking questions, who would like to start?
When I looked at the materials that you gave us on chapter two, the code enforcement article, I saw ways that it could be tightened. We've seen where people can game the system to basically never have to come into compliance with the code because there are no timelines, no deadlines, which people need to meet in order to get their issues resolved. And I think that's a big hole in this code, and I would like to see that changed. And I would like to work with the city manager and the city attorney to draft some language for the council's consideration at a regular council meeting. I do feel that this open-ended process that we have now, we know that it wastes huge amounts of staff time, which we cannot afford to allow happen, and when the violations continue unabated, the nuisance for the neighbors remains unabated, and it's not fair to them either. So, I would just like to, you know, say to the council that I would like to work on this and to bring something back for the council's consideration.
First of all, I want to say thank you to you and Rob for the job that you've been doing over the last couple of years, because, you know, even though we had a staff person and we were proactive, our proactive approach was aggressive and overbearing at times. And I can't tell you how many people I have heard that from in the community, whether they were just residents or business owners. You know, the reputation was, as soon as that person was walking up the driveway, it was, oh, God, here we go again. So I think the positive interaction that you are employing now has made a vast difference in the comments that I'm getting back. So I, you know, I applaud you for that, and I think we're doing a good job. I realize that complaints are up, but I mean, you know, if you look at the fact that there was probably a time in 2011 and 2012 that we weren't being as reactive as we probably are this year, coupled with the fact that, you know, you have vacant homes and foreclosures that you're dealing with, so it's not surprising that the numbers are up a little bit this year. But I also look at, when you look at the code enforcement and the quality of life here, if you look at property values in Satellite Beach that went up this year, we were the second highest community that went up in the county, and we went up for a reason. And it's the overall quality of life that we have here with police and fire and code enforcement and just the way our properties look, and it gets back to what Lorraine said. I mean, we're impacting neighbors when we have code enforcement issues, and that impacts property values. So, you know, we have to be looking at these at the same time we look at code enforcement. You know, I look at anonymous calls, and I look at having to identify yourself, and I can't tell you how many people have called me over the years that I've been involved in the city and said, have this problem with my neighbor, and, you know, we have a problem, and I'm afraid of them. So, you know, for someone to call and identify, they're afraid to do that. So I'm, we're not the county, we're not as big as the county, so when you call the county and you have a problem, you know, they have the whole county that has to go out. Well, you guys are out and about Satellite Beach, I think you know the people that are routine callers, and I understand your concern about people being bullying neighbors, but I'm more concerned about the person who's being reported being the bully, not the person who's making the phone call, because I think that's, when you start identifying people, that concerns me more than the person calling with that complaint. So, you know, I would look at it as, I think you and Rob are pretty good about saying, look, you know, you've called four times on this now, this is really a non-issue, I can't keep responding to this. I mean, you can iron that dispute out easier than you can when I think somebody knows that their neighbor is the one that called, and they become the aggressor. So, that kind of concerns me. I think I'd rather stay with the anonymous calls than the identifying. And the other thing that you brought up about, you know, people leaving their homes and they've divorced themselves from the house and the bank hasn't acquired the house, I think, you know, maybe when we look at the things that you're going to be looking at writing, we write something in there that the banks are going to be, somebody's going to have to be responsible for what's done on that property. If we expend resources, whether it be through Public Works or whatever, you know, I mean, we've had cases where code enforcement issues have come before the code enforcement board, and they've asked for leniency in the fines after the transaction occurred. And we have been very good at granting those things in the past. And I think we need to be a little bit more concerned about the bank's responsibilities on these properties. I don't know how we do it, but if the bank is the one that's foreclosing on the property and we're cutting the lawn, or there's other code violations, or we have to go in there and put up the fence, you know, or a gate because the pool is open, then I think the bank eventually, when the property forecloses, they need to be responsible for those fees. I don't know how we do it, I don't know if we can do it, but somebody needs to be paying for that stuff. Those are my two cents.
And John, the only thing I can say is that I know you and Rob had your work cut out for you. I see it driving through the city all the time. I mean, there's, obviously, you can pick out the ones on the various streets that are in foreclosure, you don't even have to get out of the car, you can see it. But I've seen over the last eighteen months, houses that have become awkward in appearance, overgrown, that sort of thing. I mean, there's, I'll just pick out one that I saw, I've driven past it a couple of times, it's on, it's empty, it's on DeSoto, about halfway down from A1A on the north side. It's got a poor rent sign on it, but then there's two holes on the outside of the wall, and the yard's overgrown and all that sort of thing. I mean, it just, houses have kind of, just kind of deteriorated. I mean, it's just not the same quality, the yards aren't kept up and that sort of thing like they used to be. So I mean, again, I think you're on the right track, doing the right thing, it's just staying on this stuff. I guess the only question I have is, I know Lorraine's offered to work on this document to try to tighten this up for you, and I'm all for that, I mean, but are you guys all for that? Is that something that would be of help to you guys in pulling that together?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. But, no, other than that, I know it's just, I think the economy and people are spending their money other places than taking care of the inside or outside of their houses, and I think it's...
And, you know, another thing that we're doing, especially now that the market's starting to turn a little bit, it's becoming a little bit easier to do, is there's a pool of investors out there, I mean legitimate investors, that really doing a quality job on rehabbing the properties, and they're doing the legwork, and they're pursuing the banks and trying to acquire these properties. So when we have one of these more problematic ones, where the banks aren't responsive and we just can't seem to get it to the next level, we turn these properties over to these pool of investors, and we let them at it. And we've had quite a few success stories of investors buying these properties, rehabbing them, and putting nice families in them, and, you know, it's worked out really well.
And I think there's been good investment in the city on flipping the houses, kind of, the ones that I have seen that have been done.
Try not to use the word flipping, but that's kind of what they're doing, but there's, you know, the lines go around, a lot of them were unlicensed contractors, did shoddy work, and it was just a real mess. So we're selective, you know, they're licensed general contractors, those kind of people that also are looking for homes to rehab. You know, we'll send it out to three, four, five of them, and what the best man acquired the property.
That's all I have, Mr. Ray.
I have a few things. It doesn't seem to be really broken a lot, it just needs to be tightened up in places. And I have no problem with me to let Councilman Gott help on that. Reasonable and common sense are two words that I think needs to apply here. What I don't want to happen, and I think it's a balancing act, there's always going to be houses repo, more so in a bad economy than a good economy. I don't want to make this so stringent that we slow up the process or hinder the process to get people into those houses, the place fixed up, and back on the tax roll for the city. I want to make sure we're flexible enough there, and yes, I wish somebody would pay for it. I'm not sure legally we can force people to pay for it, but I don't want to make a whole set of regulations that stop the process. I want, because I looked at this and I talked to John and Rob, and it doesn't seem to be a lot broken on it, we just need to tighten some things up, but I want to make sure the process always works smooth. And the other thing, I have a hard time, for the years I sat up here, if you have the ability to complain, stand up, say it, and put your name there, and let's get it fixed and work the problem out. I think the hardest thing ever is always getting anonymous letters, we've talked about it and asked on council, and you get it, and if you really believe in something, you need to stand up and say it, and if it's wrong. So, my feeling, you can get anonymous complaints all day long, and I'm not sure, I don't want to put you out to have to do tons of legwork and stuff for an anonymous complaint. So however we can handle that, I'd rather be on the cautious side there, but I think you need to stand up and say if you have a problem. Other thing here, I just want to say, because it's up here, strategy enforcement for fertilizer ordinance, this is, you know, I'm going to look at you on this, how are you going to reinforce a fertilizer ordinance, the type of fertilizers people are using until they ban the sale of a lot of these fertilizers? So, we're going to be in almost a pretty no-win situation to start for a while, and putting a lot of pressure on you guys to make this work. So, on the fertilizer, I think we need to see how this is going to play out. To me, what do we do to make it better? I think Lorraine's a good idea, you work with her, you're the guys out there, day in, day out. For me, from a council standpoint, common sense, reasonable, don't make it so we slow up any of the processes. And it seems to be working pretty good since 2011, so I, my thing is continue with the good work.
Can you just, I still have other comments?
Okay, I was going to, also, if you want, let the public open up, I'm going to let Courtney and then open up for public.
I know my timid personality always makes me...
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
You don't look.
No, I would not. Courtney?
I just wanted to confirm that for council and the public, that our proactiveness is really limited to when our building inspectors are out and about doing inspections, and they see something they just can't drive by without stopping. So that's our proactiveness at this point. And then, with regard to anonymous complaints, I have to say, from experience, I'm not a big fan of anonymous complaints. I think it creates a lot of work, and then it prevents people from walking and talking to their neighbor and relying on us to do that instead. But if we do continue with that, I would recommend allowing me the opportunity, because right now, the, both the police department and the building department feel that they have to respond every time they get called out. And I would say about fifty percent of the issues that reach my level are personal issues that people have with their neighbors, and the code part of it really is just being used as a way to personally attack their neighbor. So, I would like the flexibility to tell people when I see that happening, that we will not respond for a period of six months unless it's a life safety issue, because that generally makes them calm down. I did this back in Titusville as well, because we had, and every code department will tell you this happens. But that way, it gives them that relief, because right now, I would say, I would say about half of what they deal with are neighborhood disputes, rather than real code violations.
And so your proposal is what?
Is to give me the ability to tell, you know, a complainer, especially when they're going back and forth with each other, that we're not going to respond for, you know, not give a period, like, we're not going to respond for thirty days until, you know, unless it's a life safety issue, because right now, I can see that it's becoming a neighborhood dispute, and you're putting the city in the middle of it.
I'm not following. I'm an anonymous complainer, and I call John. Is he then going to tell me that you won't respond for thirty days, or at what point are you?
Sometimes, though, when you get back and forth, so we'll get, you know, sometimes there's one that we have going on for three years now, at least, and there's, I mean, I can tell you at least five of them right now off the top of my head, of people going back and forth with their neighbors. And now, and whether it started with an original code violation, I don't know, but now it's personal.
So you're saying, at the point at which it gets elevated to your level, that you can say that?
Correct.
Like a cooling off period?
Yes, exactly. And basically, what that does is that they realize that, you know, we're basically telling them, quit using the city for your personal issues. And if it's a life safety issue, you know, you've got a pool with an open fence, you know, something of that nature, we'll be there in a minute. But when somebody's, you know, parked a weird way, or, you know, anything like that, if it's not a life safety issue, we're just not going to come see you for a period of sixty days or whatever, and that generally gets them to calm down. Until then, you know, there's some that, you know, happened all weekend, the police are called out all weekend long, you know, did I get notified? I have to go out there. You know, it's, and honestly, the issue, that a recent one that we just dealt with, I couldn't find the issue. And it was over and over and over again. So I think we just need to be able to control the workload that way, is to say, look, you know, at this point, I've made this determination, we're just, we're going to cool off for a little bit and let you do that.
We can't take formal actions at a workshop, but I think that it is appropriate to give a sense of the council, and city managers asking for specific guidance, so as one council member, I would support that.
I would too. Let me open it up for public, and then we'll come back and take care of all that. At this time, I'd like to open up for public comment.
Steve Osmer, citizen. On the anonymous ones, actually, in Pennsylvania, where I was at, we had the same kind of deal. And I think using what you said, Mayor, was using some common sense. One of the things that we used to have posted is, if you make an anonymous call, the city will respond at its convenience. If you call and you leave your name and stuff, then obviously, that's something we'll go respond to right now, we'll look into it because obviously it's an issue. But if you say, well, if you leave anonymous phone call, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. So that would be a case where the next time that John and them go out on a routine call that happens to take them to where that neighborhood is or where that house is, they would look at on their way out there, but they would not make a special trip, and you announce that. We do that on our website, you have a place where it says you can fill out a form and make a code enforcement complaint. And that would be a good place to put that, that says, if you do this anonymously, we do it at the city's convenience, which means we're not going to task somebody to drop everything they're doing and run out there and check on this enforcement issue, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. Obviously, if the person wants to leave their name and their number and what really happened, then I can see if we could go over and take a look at it. And I definitely agree that if it gets to, you know, they had Phil McCoy's going back and forth with each other, then it really probably needs to come away from the building department and get raised a little bit higher, because again, then you're just using them as a mediator or someone to come out there to tick each other off, which is a waste of their time. And I don't want them to spend their time on it, we want them out there to do legit things. That's my thoughts on, especially the anonymous ones.
Thank you very much. Any other comment?
Elaine Fee, citizen. And I wanted to say that I think that you guys are really doing a good job, I can really see some improvement, you know, you work with the citizens, and I really appreciate that, being a citizen. And also, I noticed, and I don't know if this is actually the case, but being one that has been cited previously, I had a friend that just recently got cited, and the hanger was a lot more friendly. I don't know if you guys have changed it, or you have some old inventory or whatever, but it did seem a lot friendlier and more inviting and opening, and that was really appreciated too. So you guys are doing a really good job, I appreciate both of you guys working. And as far as like what Ms. Scott was saying too, it seems to me that, I know because of violations that I received or notices that I received, do have a time limit on them to respond, and then as John had mentioned also, that they've been able to resolve a lot of issues without having hearings and things like that. So it appears to me that they are doing things in a timely manner that isn't such a big issue, but I can understand where maybe you want to be a little more definitive with that. But I would ask that also that we not lose sight of our community and be in more of a family-type atmosphere, not become so Gestapo and be flexible like the mayor had stated. And also, I think that some of the issues maybe with residents, I've been here for a long, long time, and I've not gone and read all the codes and... for a long, long time, and I've not gone and read all the codes, and so it's kind of like an unawareness maybe, you know, and just when you find out, when you're in violation, and all of a sudden, you find out something. And maybe it's things we should know, but maybe there is a little bit of unawareness, and we do have a lot of new families coming in and out of here. And so I was thinking, maybe some sort of awareness campaign, you know, like Code Enforcement Works for You, or something, and about RVs, the boats, maybe the grass issues, house numbers. That was one thing I noticed in some of my processes, that there's a lot of, a lot of houses, which is kind of a scary thing, that don't have house numbers, and it's a safety issue. So that's another little even fun campaign for the, maybe the fire department, police department too. And I know that we don't have budgets or anything like that, but, you know, I was thinking, like even the Founder's Days coming up, you know, maybe y'all could have a little booth, and maybe get a sponsor for a magazine that just states some couple things, or something like that. But maybe just some awareness might also help relieve some of that too, because I'm still ignorant on some things until I violate something else. But you guys are doing a good job, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve Hedley, I'm a resident. I've recently had the pleasure, for lack of a better term, of interacting with code enforcement of the building and zoning department on three separate issues. One involved a code violation at my residence, another involved code violation next to me. And the other one where I was, I'm doing some research on a certain dock, let's call it that. There's a third part of this that's missing, that we haven't talked about tonight, and that's Tanya, who works in their office. Because my research allowed me to, to sit in that office, required me to sit in there because I don't want to take folders out, or anything like that, you'd be shocked how much she takes away from them, in a good sense. The day I was there, over the four hours I was there, she probably took 15 phone calls that normally would have gone, had to go to, to either Rob or John, and just was able to pull information up and handle that right off the bat. So I, I know it's not deliberate, but I just wanted to, to bring that up, and, as it's often said, put it on the record. As far as anonymous complaints are concerned, my mom lives in Baltimore, and Mom's best description is an old fart. She was born in 1924. So as you can tell, she's getting out there. She lives next to some people right now, who have told, told her that if she reports them to code enforcement anymore, they will literally F her up. And they are two, two teenage kids that are six foot two or so. Her complaints deal with quality of life, they're not safety, they're not life-threatening. I don't know how she can report that without fear of her life, and I mean that sincerely, fear of her life, except for anonymously. And I think it's real easy for someone like me, for you guys, to, to all sit there and go, we, we need to make people accountable and everything. I'm sorry, when you're 89 years old, and you've got two guys next to you who are threatening you, and the police have told you that they can't do anything until they hear, until the threat is made in their, in their presence, it's scary. And we talk about the elderly in our community all the time, and I think we need to make sure we keep them in mind if we're going to talk about removing anonymous complaints. Two other quick things. Received some feedback on an article that I was involved with on the building and zoning department. Most of the emails we got were very positive, as we expected. Some of the contractors we heard from were concerned with closing the building and zoning department for lunch, from 12 to 1:00. I'm not sure how you could resolve that. But a lot of them, what they were saying was, they go to lunch, and on their way, they want to pick up a permit, or they want to lather out and about. Something to just consider down the road. I mean, we're just spitballing here. It's not a complaint. The other thing was that got some issues, or got some people who recommended, and I'm not sure how to do this yet, because it's, it's, would be, I, I couldn't even, I didn't even start to look in it, but a searchable database of the code. Right now, you'd have to kind of drill down with, with different sections of downloading it. And I know this is an IT thing, and I know Adam's swamped, and, and I realize that, but somewhere down the road, being able to go onto Satellite Beach's website, type in pool into the code, into a searchable database of the code, and it come up with, comes up with the applicable sections, just like you do for the Florida statutes, or whatever, that, that might help down the road. It's not a complaint. Okay? It, it's not a complaint, it's not something that has to be done, or even I want, I believe can be done tomorrow, or whatever. But if we ever get to the point where we can look toward more IT projects, that's something that I believe can help, because eventually, everybody's going to run into their department, no matter what. Whether you have a roof, whether you have a pool, whether you get a notice, whether you're next to a nurse. And the more information you can get without bothering them, or without interacting them, the better when you interact with them, it's going to be.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Thank you all for your comments, we appreciate it. Back to council.
Going back to, and I do think that everybody's comments were, were very helpful tonight. Going back to what we started with on the agenda, I know that the staff is kind of looking for some direction, and so, Mayor, with your concurrence, could we go down each of these bullet items and see if we have a sense of the council to provide some direction? The first being that proactive versus reactive. And I'd like to comment on that. John has described how code enforcement does go out, and, and the city manager also mentioned that. And there's also the matter of our citizens on patrol. They are always out riding all of our streets, and being the eyes and ears of the community. Did you have a chance to speak with the police department today regarding that?
I did, I did. They have had about a 30% drop in volunteers since about a year ago, year and a half ago. They had a tremendous amount of them that basically decided they didn't want to volunteer anymore. And when that happened, they, their staffing became pretty limited, as far as the COPs and what they could do, and the amount of people to go out there and do those things. They are currently trying to ramp that, the COPs back up again. They have a, some kind of a conference going on here next week, is it called Triad? Where they're trying to, do you know much about that?
I don't know about the Triad, no.
Okay, well, it, it's, it's basically a, a function to try to generate volunteers. So they're trying to build their volunteer pool back up again. Linda said that while they're, they're short-staffed on their volunteers, to add more, maybe a little problematic at the moment, they're hoping that they're going to get some more COPs in, that we can start adding that, that layer back into what the COPs do. So it's definitely on the radar to add it back in. Again, it, it was a really good program, and it was working. It's strictly observe and report, and about a year ago, it, it kind of fizzled, because of the manpower fizzled.
Well, in the meantime, those that are left on patrol could continue to report back to your department when they see obvious problems. So, so that would be part of the proactive thing. And then in terms of the balance between proactive and reactive, my feeling is, how much pushback are you getting? If, if, if you're not hearing from the community about the heavy-handedness of the department, then it would seem to me, you know, and as long as we are maintaining the appearance of the city, because that is important for property values, but it seems to me, if we're not getting pushback, then we seem to have the right balance. And so my sense would be to keep working it the way we are, with your, you know, limited staffing, and, and, you know, and see where we go from there.
I, I feel the same. I think we've shown, there's been an improvement. The public has made note of that to us. So if it's not broken, it's working, my feeling is, don't change it. I mean, I just think it's fine the way it is, and obviously, it's, it's working, and if we need to change it somewhere down the road, fine. So...
Is that, is that the sense of Rob?
So we're going to keep it the way it is, I think is the sense. Rob, would you, please?
Yes, I want you guys to know exactly what I'm seeing out there. Because you guys are hearing all this PowerPoint and stuff, you guys got to see what I see and what I've been doing. I want to reflect exactly, when I get out of my truck, what do I do, how I talk to people. It's been, we say we're not proactive, reactive. I don't, I'm not P or R. I'm Rob. I don't look at numbers, letters. I treat everybody like family out there. I've been in every household out there. These are my, the dogs are my dogs, the cats are my dogs, the people are my people, you know? And that's just the kids, I want to make sure they're in soccer, and they're making good grades. And I'm getting a lot of feedback of, you know, that's, that's what we want, you know? And, and people are telling me, thank God you're here, we got rid of X factor, or maybe plural, I don't know. Let's just leave it at X factor. But what we've been, what I've been trying to do is, I've been networking with, like John said, the nomads come here with the campers with the church, I get them to clean up a couple properties. My trick is, and this is, this is what's working, I've created a network of people working together. And that's what small communities have to do. And being from a small town in Kentucky, everybody worked together. When my grandmother's house burnt down, the neighbors come up the street with buckets of chicken, and, and salad, and, and fruit pies and stuff, and said, hey, we're here to rebuild your house. That's what you need in a small community, or you will not survive. You will be eating up, you'll be getting eaten up. So I try to get that small-town thing exactly what it is. It's small-town. Keep it a small-town. Make it a small-town, and let everybody communicate. There's a little fires out there, people, you know, blow their nose in the, in the yard and stuff, and that's okay. But a lot of it's, you know, treating people, grandma, treat grandma like grandma. Have respect for your elders. When you go out to the 85-year-old lady, treat her like your grandmother. Treat her like she is your grandmother, or your mother. And you will get 10 times full once you come back. If you come out there with a clipboard and hit her over the head, her grandson, who's a lawyer up in New York, is going to call you and say, hey, that was my mom, I'm going to come down there and sue you. That's what some of the stuff we used to get. You have to just treat people fair, be respectful, and work in a network. So now, like, given, we've had all the foreclosures. How do we put that out? What, the only thing I can see what we're missing is a fast-track between why these lawns stay mowed? Because John and myself will call up the bank, the bank goes, they'll leave it, this is, they have a system how they do this. And I'm telling you the system, because we see it. They go out, they leave it in the person's name until two months before they get ready to foreclose. It's in list pendants, it's in foreclosure, they leave it in there. They want all the liability shoved on that poor guy that's living out in Utah, or Nevada. He's gone, he's not coming back, he does not care. But let's keep it in his name, so it attaches to any of his real property. What happens then, at the last month, they come and fix it up, put all new cabinets, paint the roof, clean the yard up, it's for sale, market's back up. They have a system that we are trying to beat. So we're getting involved with the banks, and we're saying, hey, we're not doing nothing, we don't own that house, we haven't foreclosed on it yet. So we're in this little quandary. So I think the fast-track what we should do is get some, the lawns, that's it. That's all we, that's the only thing that's broken, that we need to fast-track and, and close the gap on. Because we've had some, we've just bought the lawns for two years, we can't get them to mow the lawn. Give an example, I called one of the realtors, and said, can you help me out? I've had the neighbor kids, the boy scouts, can you come over here, and can you just mow your neighbor's lawn for me? There's, this is how I'm doing it. I'm not doing it through, I'm having to beat the system. I'm having neighbors mow the lawn. I'm having the guy across the street, I said, could you talk to your lawn guy, maybe he's doing all four of these lawns? I go talk to the lawn guy, I said, can you help me out? It's a straight-out ask, can you help me out? You know what? 90% of the time, they mow the lawn, says, well, I'll do it this time, but, but you know what? That buys me a little time. So a lot of times, I'm just buying time by doing a network. I've got with 10 different house flippers and 10 different realtors, saying, let's put a network of people together. I said, hey, guess what? I got 10 foreclosures I know about. Why don't you go and knock on their door and see what you can do? We've had, what, at least 20 or 30 that have been sold, because I've networked with those people, and put, and let them know about this? I don't want any money, I don't, I want the place cleaned up. It's an eyesore. I see it, I see what you guys see. But we have to have, now, the only thing I can see is bringing back some sort of system where we pay somebody to mow the lawn. The system that they do know is where we put us lean on a house. Just give an example, we have 123 Main Street, we have liens of $46,000. We've went, spent all our wheels, we've went this, we've got lawyers, we've got this, we've got guys from Public Works to mow the lawn, the guy, you know, broke his lawnmower blade. We've spent all this money and all this time, all we're doing is mowing the lawn, not getting anything done. We've got, the fast-track is getting the, I've been putting pressure on the banks, I noticed, I just pick out 10, I pressure, 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 call, call, call. If I sit there on that one property enough times, they're seeing that, hey, this is not worth keeping this property, let's get rid of it. So now, I'm learning the system, how I get them to fast-track. So if I can't fast-track, my hands are tied, I'm handcuffed, how do I do it? So now, I'm, I hit those properties, John will send them letters, thud, letter, letter. If we go into a $46,000 to $80,000 lien, the new homeowner comes in, he moves in, guess what happens? You guys know the answer to this. Dominic, what's the answer?
The price of the property goes up, because they come in and make...
And then what do we do with the lien? We say, oh, we're not going to hurt this new guy. So we, I see this, being a businessman for 20-something years, let's get rid of that, because it's, it's fake money. It's money that's just floating around and not doing anything. It's money.
In a foreclosure, we can lien the property. So if we, if we decide to go mow the property ourselves, we could assess a decent lien, but the minute the property goes through foreclosure, the liens are wiped out. The only time we'll get anything is if the lawyer that's handling the foreclosure doesn't realize that, and just offers to pay us, so we take it. Which has happened a couple times, but, but that's pretty rare. Usually, they're just wiped out. And the banks know that, so they, they don't care. They don't own the property yet, and the property owner doesn't care, so we're in that limbo. And a lot of cities during that period of time, you know, in Titusville is going through high foreclosures, we just, we just abated the property, so we just hired lawn maintenance people to take care of the properties during that period of time. Or worked, like Rob said, you know, work with the neighbors, sometimes the homeowner association take it over, or the, you know, the block, you know, they start taking over the property, but there's not a lot we can do there, until the bank owns, until the bank takes it over.
Yeah, there's one thing I would suggest to, to think about, is a little pool of money, and I mean a little pool of money, 250 bucks, something like that, not a lot. The ones that we just absolutely are not getting anywhere with, it becomes a, a public health issue, you know, the rats in the yard and this kind of stuff. What I don't want to do is put any more on Public Works. And what we've found is, it's actually cheaper to hire somebody to do that, when you start looking at fully-loaded rate and everything that goes into having Public Works do it. We got some guys that say that will mow the grass for 15 to 20 bucks, and, you know, there's no frills, they just go out there and they mow it. And I tell you, 250 bucks will get us a long way on dealing with the worst of the worst.
And it's not our insurance.
You know, some of the points that Rob brings up are, and I've seen it on my street, there have been two houses that were foreclosed, but when it all comes about, where the new people come in, they're basically gutting these houses. And you want to talk about property values, these homes are now, they were $100,000 of
repossession and foreclosure, and now there's $250,000 homes, because they've got new kitchens and bathrooms. And there's two of them now on my street that have gone through that now. And I think we're seeing that a lot through the city, is when these houses are changing, many of them are getting big upgrades. People are coming in, they've got the resources, and you know, I've said this before, our city's transitioning. We're seeing a lot of younger families moving in here, and they have disposable income. And they're fixing these houses up, and they're investing in them, they're investing in Satellite Beach. And, you know, the foreclosure is as bad as they are, in some cases, they're extremely helpful, because it's giving these people the opportunity to come in, pick up a piece of property at a, at an extremely distressed... of property at an extremely distressed rate, and then sink $125,000 into it. And they've got a beautiful home that they're going to be able to live in in our city. And, you know, I commend you guys for doing what you're doing and networking how you're networking, because it's obviously working.
The other thing, Elaine brought something about education, and John had the fertilizer and something, we can do this thing with the education. I can, you know, we can do a word on the street, every time I see a house, the beach catchers are kind of where we miss, and we're missing that connection to the city. We could put like the top 10 code enforcement issues, have a friendly code corner or something, you know, maybe something where we can kind of describe things. And I've kind of timed everything, if it's Memorial Day weekend, I'm not going and beating everybody, I know everybody's out there voting. Easter week, I know all the weekends now, I've timed it out, just, you know, it's like a system. Then I know that grass grows in the summer, it starts dying down the winter. I'm a time manager, that's how I'm doing this, I'm managing my time. I have a little summer system, I have a winter system where I start doing a winter program. I, they're in my head, you know, but the next person that comes in, he would have to learn that, you know, after a while, you just learn it, you know, and then, and then you learn the neighborhoods, you learn that, you know, there's a lot of problems on this street, the 400 block from here to here are older homes, they have older problems, you know. So we just, I think it's just keep working together and just keep that community together. If you keep that, you know, the hands together, holding hands, we're going to be fine, we're going to, we're going to be out of this and we'll be just fine.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it very much. To me, Lauren, looking at these four issues here, three of them doesn't seem to be broken. One, you want to tighten it up. So anonymous versus non, it doesn't seem to be broken right now, is everybody's comfortable with the way it is?
Agree.
Well, what are, now we are taking anonymous.
Right, it's anonymous, so it doesn't seem to be broken.
And I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't advocating not taking anonymous complaints. What I was trying to say is part of the problem of taking anonymous complaints is the tit-for-tat with neighbors, and that, in that way, if I could have that discretion of being able to, you know, put a stop to that when it happened, that would solve our issue.
And I believe we're in consensus to that we said before.
Correct.
So then, continuing with the anonymous does not present insurmountable issues.
And then the code, you're going to work on that and present it?
The code enforcement procedures.
Right, okay. And the property maintenance codes seem to be fine? Do you see anything you want changed?
I think there's a couple issues with some of the parking regulations that I'd like to come back with some changes to. And then the other item really has more to do with zoning, so when we have that workshop, we'll get to that. But that's the only things that I'm getting complaints on.
So you'll come back with us on the parking issues? Okay?
We'll do that at the same time that we talk, tightening up the code enforcement procedures.
Everybody consensus on this? Any other discussion?
Does that, does that give you the guidance that you feel you need? Well, I'd like to add my thanks to you and Rob and Tanya, your department of three, you do a lot of work, and I remember when there were a lot more people working back there. And so you're, you are helping to give Satellite Beach a good name again, and that's important, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Rob, very much. Appreciate it. Tell your staff, Tanya, thank you. Thank you for the comments from citizens, we appreciate it. Steve, thank you.
I would like to just make, bring up the issue that was brought up about your office being closed for lunch, is there something that can be done with that without?
Well, it certainly makes it more of a challenge with only three people there, and then, you know, one person is typically out in the field, and, you know, the only thing I could think of possibly doing would be a time shift where one person goes to lunch later than the other. It'd be a challenge.
Because there's two that are always, that are, two of them are out doing inspections most of the day, and then Tanya's usually there, the only person that sits in the office. So honestly, the, in my opinion, we would have to add another staffer, and, you know, that's kind of far down the road, but I've heard the same issue.
Courtney, can you look, since that is under your management, could you, you know, at least keep an eye on that, and if something pops up that does make it work?
And just to give you an idea, if you look at the workload of the other cities compared to Satellite, you can see that they have a high inspection workload, and it's very high. And then, you know, and for them to have the, the reason why they're able to handle that is their personalities, and I have to say that. With the, with the 95% of the cases being resolved within three days, that's really what, what that means is there, those cases are resolved by the second inspection, basically. So by the first time, the first conversation they have, they're able to resolve those code issues before it gets to the next phase. And most cities have a performance measurement for that. And I'll tell you, mine in Titusville was 50%. So you can see how well they do. And basically, at some point in the future, we'll have to talk about adding staff to the building department. But right now, we all know financially we're not there, but that is going to be an issue we'll have to tackle in the future.
True. Okay, thank you. One thing to council, I believe tomorrow we have a 6:30 council meeting?
The workshop.
Workshop, so please.
I think there's two people. All right, is it 6:30 or 6:45?
It's 6:30.
It's 6:30? Okay. It's supposed to be 6:30, so it's 6:30. Okay, just so remember that.
I'd like to finish making my comments.
I know you have any more, go ahead.
For the comments that were made about any changes, you can be assured that any changes that are proposed to the code will make sure that the atmosphere, the new atmosphere that is being established will not be changed, will not impact that. And the searchable code database online is certainly a good idea, and it's one of those things that'll be put on the list when resources allow.
And I think Unicode.
I was going to say Unicode is searchable.
When Unicode's available, that will, it is searchable, so.
We are working to get this next supplement codified, once that's done, we will link to Unicode. It's a searchable database.
Unicode's great. If you don't know how to use it, you'll love it.
www.mucode.org. Okay. Well, that's searchable.
I'm finished, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any further business before the board? Remember 6:30 tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Me and the adjourned, thank you.